We can see the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, a copy of this meeting has been sent to board members, all the members of the county, the county superintendent's office, the board attorney, and cable vision of board members, and posted on the district's website. Copies of the board meeting calendar, reservation were provided to all local media, town hall, township library, and all district committees. Go call Mrs. French to her place.
Here.
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 Dr. Hamilton?
Good evening, everybody. I'm sorry, what are your names? Would you like to first go?
Uh, we're gonna ask the board members in just a moment to take a seat in the front row so they get a vantage point. I'd like to thank also the board members, Board of Education members this year for all their tireless, hard work. Like to thank our administrators in the audience for their hard work this year and for attending tonight as well. I would like to thank all of our teachers who were here tonight, both our current teachers and our recently retired teachers, for coming back one last time. But most of all, I'd like to thank all of our students in attendance tonight. We also have plenty of students receiving awards who were unable to attend tonight because they're getting an award at another location for athletics or academics. Uh, and with that, we shall begin. The following West Milford staff are being recognized for their years of service in education. With twelve years of service to our district, Donna Zalasko, cafeteria aide, MAPA Road School. With fifteen years of service, Mary Ann Ferrioli, speech-language specialist, district-wide. Fifteen years of service, Bonnie Spooner, SUV driver, transportation. With sixteen years of service, Jeannie Reynolds, science teacher, Macupin School. Sixteen years of service, Mary Ann Smolinski, SUV driver, transportation. Seventeen years of service, Kathy Urbek, special class aide, high school. Eighteen years of service, Ed Madura, science teacher, high school. Eighteen years of service, Linda Rogala, special class aide, Marshall Hill. Twenty-one years of service, Deborah Kruger, grade-five teacher, Westbrook School. Twenty-one years of service, Darlene McNamara, special education teacher, Absor School. Twenty-two years of service, Deborah Van Brunt, secretary, high school. Twenty-three years of service, Kathy Santanacita, special education teacher, Marshall Hill School. Twenty-four years of service, Karen DeAngelo, special education teacher, Macupin. Twenty-four years of service, Sandra Moore, cafeteria aide, SAC aide, Macupin. Twenty-five years of service, Maggie Barker, secretary, high school. Twenty-six years of service, Gwendolyn Ganji, special class aide, Macupin School. Twenty-eight years of service, Gloria Villavere, special education teacher, Paradise Knoll and Upper Greenwood Lake School. Thirty years of service, Wayne Riker, custodian, high school. Thirty-one years of service, Lorraine Rosenblatt, special education teacher, high school. Thirty-one years of service, Vincent Thurston, head custodian, Upper Greenwood Lake School. Thirty-two years of service, Donna Deutsch-Tynan, social studies teacher, high school. Thirty-five years of service, Dave Spanjenberg, general maintenance, district-wide. And thirty-seven years of service, Diane Campanello, special education teacher, MAPA Road. Thank you to all of our retirees, and next up, we have Mrs. West will present an award.
The following individual is being recognized for supporting literacy in the West Milford School District with the Dictionary Project. Mr. Eric Kurson, Rotarian.
Hi, ladies and gentlemen, Board of Education members. So I have the distinct honor every year to present the awards to our Special Olympics community. The Special Olympics motto is "Let me win, and if I can't win, let me be brave in the attempt." Well, all of these children and these athletes are winners, and they're also very brave individuals. So I wanna thank them, and I wanna thank our coaches. Can our coaches come on up and help me hand out the awards? I'm, I'm going to just call out the names of the coaches, and as we name the athletes, just please hold your applause to the end. We all wanna cheer, but we have a lot of athletes to get through, including our friend Ben Backers. Okay. The, um, the coaches who, who worked with our Special Olympians this year are head coach Kristy Clave, assistant coaches, Aaron Branigan, Alex Kaylee, Barbara Chivron, Colleen Chuchuga, Jamie Giordano, Lindsay Heferin, Nicole Langaro, Karen Reinhold, Lauren Rembrandt, Beth Schaefer, Jake Skees, Melissa Teresco, and Alyssa Willis. Can all of our student volunteers who have volunteered with the Special Olympics program, can you come on up to be honored? You're gonna be called up later, don't worry about it. Okay, so the following students are being recognized for their achievements in West Milford Special Olympics. When I call your name, come up and get your certificate from Coach Clave. Ian Anderson. Joanna Arias. Wyatt Becker. Matthew Berlum. Oh, I'm sorry. Coach Clave, can I call out his, uh, his, his?
Oh, sure.
Basketball, track and field, summer games, for Wyatt. Matthew, basketball, bowling, track and field, summer games. Kelly Butterey, basketball, track and field, summer games. Michael Carlson, bowling. Ava Carpenter, basketball. Ethan Clark, basketball, bowling, track and field, summer games. Jacob Cologne, basketball, track and field. Christina Conklin, track and field, summer games. Setney Cornwell, basketball, track and field, summer games. Danielle Cassari, bowling. Devon Coit, basketball, track and field. Ariana Delgado, basketball, track and field, summer games. Shinora DeLeese, basketball, bowling, track and field, summer games. Kate Duffy, basketball, track and field, summer games. Vincent Freeman, basketball, track and field, summer games. Max Fuchs, track and field, summer games. Spencer Fulton, bowling, track and field, summer games.
Come on, Max. Come on, Max.
Kara Gadish, track and field, summer games. Kenny Gala, basketball. Brittany Gornall, basketball, bowling. Trinity Gossett, basketball, bowling, track and field, summer games. Maggie Gujari, basketball, bowling, track and field, summer games. Kaylee Haftek, basketball, bowling, track and field. Corey Halter, basketball, bowling, track and field, summer games. TJ Hilmer, basketball, bowling. Nathan Jordan, basketball, bowling, track and field, summer games. Allison Kissler, basketball, bowling.
You can let him play.
Robert Lockwood, basketball, bowling, track and field, summer games. Rachel Maskerines, basketball, track and field. Samantha McCauley, basketball, track and field. Big Mike McCluskey, basketball, bowling, track and field, summer games. Molly McEwen, basketball, bowling, track and field, summer games. Kaitlyn O'Neal, basketball, bowling, track and field, summer games.
I'm sorry.
Fan favorite, Megan O'Neal, basketball, bowling, track and field, summer games. Jude Otto, basketball, bowling, track and field, summer games. Ashley Pennat, basketball, track and field, summer games. Char- Charlie Polglaze, basketball, track and field. Taylor Sampson, basketball, bowling, track and field, summer games. Olivia Stonaker, track and field. Logan Trout, basketball, track and field. Benjamin Weiss, basketball, track and field. Benjamin Wells, bowling. Jeffrey Youngren, bowling. Now we can give him a round of applause. Okay, a few years ago, Coach Clave and her coaches started a, um, young athletes program that's gotten more and more successful as the years have gone on. So the following students are being recognized for their achievements in the, in the West Milford Special Olympics Young Athletes Program. Again, please hold your applause till the end.
The program is ages two through seven. It's completely unified. Students with or without disabilities can participate, and we all are learning and playing together.
Jake Babcock. Braylon Barlow. Brendan Barlow. Matthew Bingham. Davis Bonar. Hazel Bonar. Gigi Bosco. Christopher Bradbury. Robert Bradbury. I think they have a sister, Sarah Bradbury. Owen Brand. Mark Brand. Christian Berlum.
Come on, Christian.
Rosebeth Cash. Adriana Citrulo. Gianni Citrulo. Vivian Clave. No relation, no relation. Apollo Davis. Andrew Denight. Luke Dorr. Alexander Janis. Samuel Kane. Wilson Kane. Liam Kelly. Elena Latocha. Sebastian Latocha. Gabriella McCauley. Liliana McCauley. Mariah Milligan. Anthony Parisi. Taylor Pierce. Iris. Max Santanacita. Adam Sennick. Brandon Sennick. Joey Sullivan. Brennan Tennant. Connor West. Taviana Williams. Mark Youngren. All right, let's give our young athletes a round of applause. Okay, we have one more group, one more group. Okay, the following students are being recognized for their achievements in the West Milford Special Olympics Unified Partners, okay? Unified program. It is a combination of students with special needs and, and students without, um, and they, they compete together in various events, including track and field, bowling, and cheer. Okay. Destiny Garrity. Heather Garrity. Amaya Falby. Trinity Gossett. Kaitlyn O'Neal. Abigail Weiss. Matthew Berlum. Ethan Clark. Haley Clark. Kaitlyn Clark. Jacob Cologne. Shinora DeLeese. Amanda Fink. Trinity Gossett. Maggie Gujari. Nathan Jordan. Molly Kane. Owen Kane. Truman Kane. Andrew Lockwood. Robert Lockwood. Gianna McCluskey. Michael McCluskey, AKA Gianna's brother. Molly McEwen. Kaylee Moore. Kaitlyn O'Neal again, Kaitlyn O'Neal. Hope Otto. Jude Otto. Taylor Sampson. RJ Utter. Sidney West. Grace Amala. Tess Becker. Kelly Butterey. Kaitlyn Clark. Setney Cornwell. Kate Duffy. Amaya Falby. Kara Gadish. Julia Gerst. Michaela Gerst. Haley Golding. Trinity Gossett. Maggie Gujari. Molly Kane. Allison Kissler. Gianna McCluskey. Emma Michalka. Kaitlyn O'Ne- O'Neal. She has the most Oscars this evening. Megan O'Neal. Ally Rocky. Taylor Sampson. Olivia Stonaker. Ralph Turry. Abigail Weiss. And Sidney West.
'Cause you know, I like the microphone. I just like the microphone. Um, all of the coaches you see up here, coach all three seasons, and they do it voluntarily. They're so dedicated and make me so proud. We came back from our weekend away at TCNJ, where parents aren't allowed to attend. We were there Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and we came back with a lot of bling. This was, uh, the first year where we offered unified sports in everything that we could, and we started our first Unified Cheer program, and in seven weeks, had a performance down and were able to showcase it. Um, we're looking towards, you know, unified everything and making sure that we're all really just, not just playing in a unified way, living in a unified way. And a lot of the reason that you heard a lot of repeat names were because those athletes or partners, uh, participate. And a lot of the reason that you heard a lot of repeat names were because those athletes or partners, uh, participate all year round. So, great job, I'm so proud of you.
We'd like to round of applause for West Milford Special Olympics Program. At this time, I would like to invite our supervisor of history and business, as well as our supervisor of language arts, and our high school principal, Mr. Strians, Mrs. West, and Mrs. Johnson. They are here to present, uh, some awards for students that are in collaboration with local organizations. West Milford VFW, American Legion, and Elks, and they're gonna introduce, uh, the representatives of each of those.
The following Mac Pen student is being recognized as West Milford's winner of the 2018-19 VFW Patriots Pen Essay Contest. She placed first on the local level and second in the District One area. That's Lily Rodak. The next award, um, is from the Elks Contest, and with me is Mr. Assoltis, the Elks Contest Chairperson to present the awards. The following Mac Pen students are being recognized as West Milford's winners in the 2018-2019 Elks Americanism Essay Contest. And our eighth grade winner is Justina Rai Capobianco. And our seventh grade winner is Michael Johnson.
Like to invite Mr. Gamble, who is the, uh, American Legion Contest Chairperson, to present with me. The following Mac Pen students are being recognized as West Milford's winners of the 2000, 2018-2019 American Legion Safety Essay Contest. Uh, Rosa Nichols, first place, local and county. As well as third place in the state. Leslie Paulino, second place, local. And Cassidy Coons, third place, local. I'd like to invite Ms. Loscalzo from the Elks Contest, uh, co-chair. The following s- Mac Pen students are being recognized as West Milford's winners in the 2018-2019 Elks Drug Awareness Essay Contest. Julia Dan, winner, grade eight. Madison Chastley, winner, grade seven. And Jared Jones, winner, grade seven. I'd like to introduce Mr. Strians.
Good evening. The following high school students are being recognized for their selection to the New Jersey Elks Leadership Program. Colin Clinton. And Colin Webb. Thanks. At this time, I'd like to introduce the principal of Mac Pen Middle School, Mr. Mark Citro.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to recognize the Mac Pen School student, uh, as the winner of our 2018-19 Spelling Bee, Brooke O'Connor. The following Mac Pen School students are being recognized for winning the West Milford Beautification Committee T-Shirt Logo Contest. First place, Skylar Rebitsky. First runner-up, Serena Coons. And second runner-up, Ryan Cameretto. The following Mac Pen students are recognized as the Lions Club Peace Poster Contest winners. Serena Coons, first place. And Ryan Lombardi is our runner-up. We're leaving for Washington tomorrow, I'm sure everybody's home sleeping or studying. I'd like to bring up Mrs. Johnson.
The following Mac Pen School student is being recognized as the finalist for the Geography Bee, Joseph Longo. And the following Mac Pen students are being recognized as the regional finalists of the History Bee, and they have also qualified for the National History Bee in Chicago. First up, Petra Gammann. Next, Richard Gomez. Also, Andreas Lamana. And Arnav Mehta. And finally, Ryan Tartarilla.
At this time, I would like to invite our state and national champion band director to the, uh, front to present the following awards.
The following Mac Pen School students are being recognized for their selection to the Sussex County Junior Honors Chorus. Angelo Fernandez. Lauren Frye. Julia Gerst. Belle Hill. Daphne King. Riley Orr. Jason Pritchett. Jack Riley. Angelina Racasano. Ty Rocky. Lily Rodak. Charlotte Storch. And Matthew Strians. The following Mac Pen students are being recognized for their selection to the North Jersey Junior Region One Chorus. Kaitlyn Campbell. Lauren Frye. Reese Huber. Daphne King. Jason Pritchett. Jack Riley. Sharon Schwerner. Charlotte Storch. And Madison Trout. The following Mac Pen student is being recognized for their selection to the All North Jersey Region One Junior High School Band. And that's Catherine Garcia. The following Mac Pen School students are being recognized for their selection to the North Jersey Junior Area Band. Sierra Dogas. Trevor Darnstadt. May Dennison. Catherine Garcia. Brooke O'Connor. Sarah Pilar. And Jason Pritchett. The following Mac Pen students are being recognized for their selection to the Sussex County Band. Melissa Commune. Jordan Mann. Colin Minier. Sarah Flipowicz. And Catherine Garcia. The following high school students are being recognized for their selection to the 2019 New Jersey All-State Jazz Choir. Summer Carpenter. Skylar Knight. Alexis Levandowski. Elizabeth Lynn. Julia Macedo. And Miles Minier. The following high school students are being recognized for their selection to the 2019 All North Jersey Region Chorus. Aiden Becker. Mason Fernbacher. And Madeline Storch. The following high school students are being recognized for their selection to the 2019 All North Jersey Region One Jazz Choir. Summer Carpenter. Adeline Durant. Skylar Knight. Elizabeth Lynn. Julia Macedo. Erica Martin. Joseph Perry. Nicholas Rondinelli. Madeline Storch. And Erin Timmons. The following high school students are being recognized for their selection to the 2019 North Jersey Area Wind Ensemble. Stephen Lang. Ben McLaughlin. Connor Partington. And Amanda Roth. The following high school students are being recognized for their selection to the 2019 North Jersey Area Band. Maria Abelov. Cindy Centron. Erin Lopez. Raquel Mia. Marie Parkin. Sean Partington. Sophie Pilar. Teresa Santa Lucia. And Christina Shaw. The following students are being recognized for their selection to the 2019 All North Jersey Region One Band. Stephen Lang. And Marie Parkin. This student is being recognized for his selection of the 2019 All North Jersey Region One Orchestra, Ben McLaughlin. The following students are recognized for their selection of the 2019 All North Jersey Region One Wind Ensemble. Region One Wind Ensemble. Ben McLaughlin. Let him get all the way back to his seat before I bring him up again. And this high school student is being recognized for his selection to the New Jersey All-State Wind Ensemble. First-chair trombone in the state of New Jersey. I'd like to invite to the microphone, Mrs. Cindy Gallagher.
The following high school students are being recognized as West Milford third-place winners of the Passaic County Film Festival in the music category. Clay Nicholson. And Devon Freed. These high school students are being recognized as West Milford winners of the Young Artists Award sponsored by the Ringwood Manor Artists Association. First place, 2D, grade nine, Stephanie Wong. First place, 2D, grade 12, Diana Novacheska. Second place, 2D, grade nine, Megan Spleet. Second place, 2D, grade 12, Xenia Wong. Third place, 2D, grade nine, Maya Starr. Third place, 2D, grade nine, Julia Genesco. First place photo, grade 12, Mackenzie Mann. Second place photo, grade 12, Megan McCormick. The following high school student is being recognized as West Milford third-place winner of the Wallkill Valley High School Invitational Art Show in the area of Mixed Media, Diana And this following high school student is being recognized as a third-place winner by the Culinary Institute of New York as America's top high school pastry chef, Alexandria Butler. And I'd like to introduce Mr. Strians.
All right, tonight I'm pinch-hitting for our Director of Athletics, Mr. Trent Acosta. He's out at the Passaic County Girls' Awards Dinner tonight. We also have our baseball dinner going on tonight, too, so a lot of our athletes, I believe, are not going to be here. The following high school student is being recognized as West Milford recipient for National Football Foundation and College Football Hall of Fame Scholar-Athlete of the Year, This high school student is being recognized as West Milford's winners of Passaic County Coaches Association Male and Female Student Athletes of the Year, Joseph Cummings. And I know she's at the Passaic County Awards Dinner tonight, Kayleen Rose Orzannick. The following high school students are being recognized as nominees for the Bergen Records I Am Sport Award for West Milford Township, Josiah Basket. Samantha Lyons. And RJ Utter. The following high school student is being recognized as West Milford's recipient for New Jersey State Interscholastic Athletic Association Scholar-Athlete of the Year Award, Kayleen Rose Orzannick. The following high school student is being recognized as West Milford's recipient for the New Jersey State Interscholastic Association and Star Ledgers National Girls' and Women's in Sports Award, Kelsey Murphy. The following high school students are being recognized as West Milford's winners for Male and Female Scholar-Athletes of the Year Awards Big North Conference, Ray Gorney. The following high school student is being recognized as West Milford nominee for New Jersey Super 100 Team for Football, Zachary Milco. The following high school students are being recognized as winners of the Patterson Old-Timers Athletic Association Award for Overall Sports, Josiah Basket. The following high school student is being recognized as the winner for the AAA Drivers' Education Scholar Award, Sarah Augustinelli. I know this one's not here because she was studying for exams. Actually, at this time, I'm going to introduce Ms. Weiss-Magaset.
Let's move this down for a little shorty person. So first, we're going to recognize students that won. We competed at NJITA, the Regional Science Olympiad Competition, and we had some winners at Mackupin. So Lina Liakis won first place in Boomer Lever. Sanaya Melkor and Violet Willows won third place in the Mystery Architecture. The Write It, Do It Competition, third-place winners were Wyatt Space and Casper Siler. And then we'll move on to our robotics team. So you know that we've been building our high school robotics program, and we went to competition at Passaic County College, and Axel Malatac won first place in the obstacle I think the most notable thing about this competition is that we won the sportsmanship award, our team, which is voted on by all of the coaches from the other teams and the competitors from the other teams, and I think that really speaks nicely to our character ed program and how really, truly strong it is here. So I'm just going to call everybody, and all of you can hold that applause and we'll just do it all at once. Keith Carpenter. Heather Garrity. Daniel Glick. Megan Kerwin. Axel Malatac. Justin Olson. Colin Petrich. Ryan Thunell. And Zachary Treptow. So some of our other awards are directly related to academics and nominations. We have the New Jersey Governor's School for Sciences nominee, Samantha Hazen. Also, the Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute Medal, Samantha Hazen. And then the RIT Medals for Outstanding Achievement in Computing. We have two for computing and two for innovation and creativity. For computing, Nicholas Pluta. That comes with some fabulous little bling in the form of a medal. Riley McGill. And for innovation and creativity, Jack Osterly. And Samantha Hazen. Mrs. Johnson will take it away from here.
The following high school student is being recognized as West Milford's nominee for the George Washington Book Award, Kari Malatac. And the following high school student is being recognized as the recipient of the National History Club's History Student of the Year Award, Amelia Taylor. And I'd like to invite Ms. West back up.
The following high school student is being recognized as West Milford's nominee for the Wellesley Book Award, Kari Malatac. The following high school student is being recognized as West Milford's nominee for the St. John's Book Award, Jasmine Marrero. The following high school students are being recognized for placing second in the yearbook and literary magazine contest from the National Scholastic Press Association, Madison Augustine, Kelly Brennan. Mariah Dynan. Sean Fagan. Jared Miller. Kayleen Rose Orzannick. James Patton III. The following high school students are being recognized for their contributions to the Highland Echo, which won second place for the newspaper review and contest from the National American Scholastic Press Association. Nicholas Belkara. Kelly Brennan. Delaney Brown. Olivia Del Ollo. Joseph Heisler. Jared Miller. Kayleen Rose Orzannick. James Patton III. April Racasano. Colin Webb. And Michael Wiss. I'd like to introduce again Mr. Strians.
The following high school students are being recognized as recipients of the Hugh Bryan Youth Leadership Award, Hope Calamari. The following high school students are being recognized as West Milford's nominee to attend Boys' State, Evan Brown. The following high school students were selected by the Rotary Club to attend Rotary Youth Leadership Award Conference, Yuri Anistav. John Gaffney. The following high school student is being recognized as the U.S. Presidential Scholar
So I just want to, once again, say thank you to our board, to those of you who have made it through. At this point, we are going to reorganize and continue our board meeting. Once again, I want to say thank you for your participation tonight. Spags, thanks for being here.
Mrs. Francisco?
Yes, at the next meeting on June 18th, you'll have the minutes from May 21st and May 23rd for consideration.
Thank you. Under President's Report, I'll save everything for the next meeting. Public comment. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first, with five minutes for each speaker, for a period of 30 minutes, and then, time permitting, other public comment listed to... Other public comment limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the 30-minute time period transpires. All members of the public speaking during public comment are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to give their full names, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during public comment. Anyone wishing to speak?
Move to close public comments?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Move to adopt the agenda as presented?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Education, Mrs. Dwyer?
We will take action on this item after executive session.
Okay, thank you. Operations and Finance, Mr. Guarino? I'm too fast for you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve items one through five under Operations and Finance.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, Mrs. Francisco, roll call, please.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ofchinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes. Mrs. Fritz, personnel?
I'd like to move items one through five under personnel.
Second.
Discussion? I just wanted to make a shout-out to Frank Pelletieri. I think he's going to be missed here in the high school, and I wish him well, and I hope he has a wonderful retirement. Roll call, Mrs. Francisco? Roll call, Mrs. Francisco?
Mrs. Van Dyke?
I'm sorry. Oh, I didn't see you, I'm sorry, Ray.
That's okay, thanks.
See, I don't look at that side of the table.
So, I wasn't here at the last meeting, I think, that number five got taken. The administration for the work they did and going back and looking at those things. So, I really appreciate it. Sometimes, you know, it's tough to go through those things, so I know that there was concern at the last meeting. I'm glad I'm here to vote on amendments.
Any other discussion?
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes, on one through four, and abstain from five.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes, on one through four, no on number five.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Ofchinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes, on one through four, and I abstain on five.
That ends...oh, wow, that ends the...to public comments again.
We do a five.
Members of the public who requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first, with five minutes for each speaker, for a period of 30 minutes, and then, time permitting, other public comment listed to five minutes, limited to five minutes per speaker, will be allowed until the 30-minute time period transpires. All speakers are asked to give their full name, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during public comment. Is anybody wishing to speak during this part of public comment?
Seeing none, I move to close.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, we need a motion for executive session. We're going to need two executive sessions tonight, because, one, we're going to be coming back out for action, and then, the second one, you'll adjourn from. So, how should we do?
I move that at 8:15, we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel appointments, resignations, parent litigation matters, special education matters, negotiations, HIBs, and matters of attorney-client privilege. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable.
I need a...when you come back, okay. I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All righty. Pull the meeting back to order. Roll call, Barbara?
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Here.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Here.
Mr. Guarino?
Here.
Mrs. Fritz?
Here.
Mr. Ofchinsky?
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Here.
Mrs. Dwy...yes, Mrs. Dwyer, you're...
Okay. Move to accept the recommendations of the superintendents regarding the following HIBs. 2019 H11 as substantiated. 2019 H12 as substantiated. 2019 H13 unsubstantiated. 2019 H14 substantiated. 2019 H15 unsubstantiated. 2019 H16 substantiated. 2019 H17 substantiated. 2019 E11 unsubstantiated. And 2019 E12 unsubstantiated.
Second.
Need discussion? If not, Barbara, roll call.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ofchinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Need a motion for executive session?
I move that at 9:07 PM, we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing superintendent evaluation. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And, did you say you will adjourn from executive session?
Yes.
I did not.
Okay.
We will adjourn after executive session.
From.
From executive session.
Different than after.
We will adjourn from executive session.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night.